This is an invocation and pledge allegiance. Here we go.
Thank you for bringing this group of people here today to do hard little bit and guide us in making good decisions today.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the Constitution of the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval of the agenda.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
At this point in the meeting, I ask for public comment. We're looking for public comment, anybody from the public, on an item that is not on the agenda. The items that are on the agenda will take public comment individually for each of those items. But if anybody has anything that they want to address that isn't on the agenda, this would be the time. We'll proceed to the first item of business under old business minutes from the meeting of September tenth. Does everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes? And do we have any additions or corrections? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion. We've moved the minutes from last month's meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Next item is consideration of a planned development district for parcel thirty-nine zero 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 eight one ninety-six currently zoned at Savannah Track PDD.
And this will be both the PDD and IMP. This is just a quick refresher from last month's meeting because you heard the original application. And as you noticed, there are supplemental materials that were provided in your packet with the changes. Again, this property is located at, sorry, Freedom Parkway and Honeysucker Road. It's the parcels, parcel up here in front, as well as this is actually not a right-of-way, it is a parcel here. And then Honeysucker Road goes back to this existing equestrian facility. As you can see, the current front parcel is currently in the city limits. The equestrian facility is not. So this would be running concurrently with an annexation petition which would go through city council if advanced to the next process. Some pictures of the current situation. This is looking from Honeysucker Road out. And you can see that there have been road improvements done since our last pictures that we had at the last meeting. They're much better pavement situation now as far as that goes. And just a couple of pictures looking from the site at the adjacent parcels. This is the existing equestrian facility which is proposed again to remain as part of this application. And this is the proposed concept plan in front of you. The front parcel still has the twenty-nine thousand square foot buildings. However, as you would see in your packets, they have refined the proposed uses since the last meeting. So Planning Commission raised concerns at the September meeting. Since then, again, the allowed land uses have been updated, reflect a more neighborhood-friendly use and service. So we feel like that's more in keeping with the rural community that exists out there right now. We have less fears of impacts of major industrial prospects on that property. And then the applicant has also provided additional details regarding architectural design and scale. So the maximum building height is now proposed to be thirty-five feet, which is much more appropriate with the scale for the community. And then the low country vernacular architecture will be provided as well. And then you had asked for an updated letter of intent to serve from BJWSA, which has been provided. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jordan to kind of talk about the, I have your elevations here that you had provided in the packet as well, and any other information you'd like to add.
Yeah, I'm Jordan Holloway. On behalf of Richard Farm, here to answer any questions that you have. So this is the view that would be looking onto Honeysucker from Freedom Parkway. So with this plan, the road as exists today is to be realigned, it's going to shift further to the east, so just kind of keep that in mind. But that's looking down Honeysucker Road. Next view is if you were standing right in front of the property. So in between the road, there's going to be some landscape buffering, there's going to be a pond as well, some additional landscaping before you actually get to the building. We wanted to keep that setback. We don't want it to be big and bold and upfront and super highly visible, so we're trying to blend it into the surrounding character of the surrounding properties. This is then just further down Freedom Parkway. And this is then looking along Freedom Parkway. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I know last month when we met, we had a, one of the residents was here and they were just great in the back. And I know that you had met with them all, they were all happy with the changes and the opportunity. The one thing I did question and I want to confirm, they want this road to stay unpaved?
Correct. So we are proposing with this that we would pave from Freedom Parkway to the backside. Is there a laser?
Yeah, so if you hold down the top button, it'll, you can move over here and stuff like that.
Okay, so it would be paved to right about there. So from this section out to the road to meet the standards coming in, this would all be repaved.
Just to your entrance.
Correct. So and from here further back, it would not be paved.
And that's what they want?
Correct.
Okay. I just, when I was there, I was there yesterday, I was there last month, and both days, surprisingly, it had rained. I'm in South Carolina.
Yep.
And there were some, I wouldn't say flooding, but a lot of excess water on the road. I just thought it was something that should be addressed.
There is excess ponding, especially on the, on the front half. So when we paved this front section, we would alleviate a lot of those issues in front. We will be doing upkeep and maintenance of the, of the road, the whole way back to the equestrian facility. So in the future, there may be improvement in terms of ditches and piping, but there's no plans to pave it with asphalt, which is a bad road.
On adding these two parcels together, connecting it with the road, I wasn't crazy about that. However, y'all have, this looks like what I would want to see. The dirt road stopped there, I live on a dirt road and I hope they never paved my dirt road. So to each his own, but it is a horse farm and that's probably beneficial to somebody. If it was me, I would want a dirt road. I like all the changes and the design, the way you laid it out here has made it hard to resist this. So and the setting system, don't have a problem with it at all. I'm, I'm happy with this.
Thank you.
Morning. I missed last month's meeting, but I watched the recording about twice because it was a lot of back and forth and a lot of things to go through. So I have to agree with my colleagues, the revised elevations of the warehouses look, look great, kind of fits that low country theme that I, that I like. Do you have, and I know this was kind of talked about before, but do you have any kind of letter of intents with tenants?
We don't yet. We're so early on in the process and having to go through the annexation process, we didn't count our chickens before that. So that'll be something, you know, forthcoming in the future, but nothing yet.
And each one is going to have up to five potential suites? Is that right?
Yeah, and that's where it's going to be, you know, if there's a tenant that wants, you know, half of a building because they're a, you know, fitness facility or gym or something like that, or a recreation center, we'll be able to accommodate that. So it's roughly laid out in, you know, five thousand square feet or more tenant spaces, but that could change, you know, plus or minus depending on the needs of, you know, whoever wants to use the space.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate your taking the time to address all the things that we raised at the previous meeting. We did have a rather lengthy discussion about it last time and the commission tabled matters for you to go address that. And you've done everything I think we asked you to do. Does anybody else have any other comments? Is anybody from the public, is there any public comment with regard to this? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this as is.
It's the recommendation, we recommend to city council that they approve.
Yes, you'll make that recommendation, you need to make two separate ones, one for the PDD and one for the IMP, please.
Okay, well that, that motion is for the PDD. Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the, for the initial master plan, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the initial master plan for parcel zero-three-nine-zero-zero zero-eight-one-nine-six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? The recommendation passes. The next item of new business is consideration of a master plan in parcel zero-six-seven-zero-zero zero-one-zero-four-two, townhouses and cottages at East Argent.
Sorry.
And this will include designing that?
You're acting like me. I'm all right.
All right. This is again for an initial master plan. The parcel is located, it's not quite parceled off, so forgive me, I did some artwork on our GIS here, but it's approximately where this red outline is here. You have East Argent Parkway here, and then Sun City over here, and Riverton Point on this side of the road. The original East Argent Plan Development District was approved in two thousand and five, but it was recently amended, most recently amended in two thousand and seventeen. And this use is an approved use for that parcel. This will be for a combination of two-story and three-story townhome buildings. And you can see the plan here, and I have the plan on a couple slides, so I'm going to kind of keep going back and forth. But you have the two access points, one here, which is a full access point, and one down here, which is a right-in, right-out. And then you have the amenity spaces kind of scattered throughout. This is on just under twenty-nine acres, twenty-three acres of upland, and it's for a hundred and fifty-one proposed townhome units. These are considered single-family townhome units. And again, the access will be off of East Argent Parkway with an eight-foot multi-use pathway along the parkway, which is consistent with what we will see throughout the entire East Argent Parkway moving forward. Five-foot sidewalks will be provided internally throughout. So you can see that eight-foot pathway right here, which kind of meanders along the road. And then another, so you'll have the, these are two-story townhomes, and then the three-story are tucked internally. And you have a, sorry, community pavilion here. The buffers along the parkway are fifty-foot minimum. Those may be disturbed and replanted to allow for the infrastructure that needs to come in as well as the pathway. And then a twenty-five-foot completely undisturbed buffer adjacent to Riverton Point, that'll remain natural. There's a proposed forty-eight percent open space with this application. Eleven and a half percent of that is active open space. The parking will be provided in a combination of garages, driveways, and then they have twenty-nine guest spaces. And on this illustration, I'll show you, the guest spaces are located here and here. One of staff's, the only staff recommendation on change here is that we would recommend that some of the guest parking spaces be more accessible to these units on this part of the property here. And I will say, the applicant has worked with staff throughout, from the original application to provide more amenity space accessible to the majority of the units instead of off to one end of the property, so we appreciate that. Today, they're here for a recommendation to city council. The next step would be most likely a city council workshop, and then a city council meeting. And then beyond that, they will have to do their fully engineered plans for site development permitting, which will be reviewed by staff review committee. Again, our recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed initial master plan with the condition that additional guest parking be provided near the, I said near the amenity area, I meant near the, sorry, that's a typo.
Is that the east end of the project?
It is south, the southern end of the parcel. I apologize for that typo. I meant, oh, near this amenity space is I think what I meant when I typed that in there. So yes, the southern end. So at this time, Rusty, would you like to come up and add any information?
Sure. It clicks this way, we've got, if you hold down, that's a laser, and I do have your visual impact if needed.
Perfect, I love to see that. Thanks for your explanation of this. Yes, I mean, the one, the, we did try to make an effort, we worked with the city staff along and along for a number of months now, changing the way we did the layout. We, one thing that we, so one thing that we did through their recommendation, this used to be surrounded by a street that went around, but we eliminated the streets because the, all of these three-story units are, will have rear entry garages. And so they'll have, be able to access through the alley of each one of these. And so that, these units here will actually have frontage onto the amenity space. And then the ones around the perimeter here are, will have garages on the, on the front, and then they'll have just backyards along the back. We did, another thing that we made an adjustment on is we eliminated some of the, some of the units that we originally proposed, and we added this amenity space here. That was to give a little bit, even though we're having an undisturbed buffer adjacent to these residents in Riverton Point, we were trying to make sure that we were going to give, just a little bit more of an open space to put it be active in that area. And this is, this is an unplanned space, just pass it, pass it far. Same for the amenity space around, around the store mart pond. And then we do have a visual impact. What I'll do, while they're, while they're doing that, I'll take any, if you have any questions or if you want to comment.
I do have a little question. Have you given any thought to the parking near the amenity center?
That, that would be fine for us to add those additional spaces along.
Would you have to eliminate, could you do it there, would you have to eliminate housing to do it?
We would, we would just basically add it right adjacent to it. See if I can flick through this thing.
She left you on this. Why would she? Sorry.
I should let down this.
Yeah.
And while we're waiting on the, on the buffer up front, the fifty-foot, and with the car, or the wall path, can you kind of explain that, is that going to be a true fifty-foot? And what would that look like?
There you go, sorry about all that. This, this is a fifty-foot buffer, it will be a buffer, but it will be because of the layout and of the pathway alone here, this eight-foot pathway, there will be impacts to that buffer. And so we'll basically go back and do additional landscape plantings to be able to maintain, to restate that buffer. And then like you said, on the rear of the property, this twenty-five foot along the back will be completely undisturbed and along the south side as well.
And Mr. Rouse, are you happy with the turnaround? It looked good, but you think you're happy with this?
At first glance, everything looks to be good. There will be some further engineering that will be there, maybe some additional signage in the alleyways for us, but everything meets our standard here.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's all.
Do you have any questions?
I do, yes. So a couple, couple of questions I got. So is this kind, this is the layout? This is the proposed layout for it?
Right.
Because I'm just, visually, it doesn't kind of give that low country feel for me. And so it's more of, it reminds me of like base housing or dormitory housing for me.
Yes.
So that's just visually what I'm thinking, so first thing I saw when I looked at this, it just kind of caught me off guard a little bit on that. So just aesthetically, because I'm thinking about that entire area where we're rebuilding and we're restructuring to kind of have that low country feel still.
Right. A lot of that will be handled with architecture.
I will be able to, you can see the buildings aren't just flat-based buildings, they have a lot of undulations and everything. A lot of it will be able to handle with architecture.
In the East Argent area, the whole community has an architectural review board as well with some standards that will give some guarantees on the looks of those townhomes as well.
Is this in one of the improvement districts? No? No? I'm just trying to.
The improvement districts don't go on the private, on the individual parcels, it's for the roadways and infrastructure.
Okay.
So there was a, there was an improvement district out there, but it does not impact this at all.
Okay, all right, thank you. And so the three-story, is that, is it parking the first story, second, third is livable? Or is it, how is the parking, is it going to be like an attached garage?
It'll be attached.
Or built-in, so not a built-in garage?
On, on the three stories, the two stories, well, it would be a built-in.
So the first story will be parking, second story will be livable? So built-in, like I'm thinking of a...
That's a, that's a great question. I don't know the answer.
I'm just, I'm just curious, it's like, so yeah, so said another way, is what, what is the proposed square footage of a two-story versus a three-story?
I mean, there, I don't have the square footage, but I mean, as far as like, will the, will it have a, will it live, will there be livable space on the first floor and on the second floor? Each unit will have livable space. Amount of that, I'm not sure of.
Okay, all right. Let's see, the, what are, what are our requirements for the buffer on the side that, that parallel or is adjacent to Riverton? Is twenty-five foot, is that our required buffer?
The, the East Argent Plan Development District only establishes buffers for the perimeter, and at the time of each master plan, we establish the internal buffers. So twenty-five foot technically is, yeah, it's a self-imposition, but they are remaining to, they are committing to do a preserve buffer. There's also twenty-five foot preserve buffer on the other side, as well as a large berm on the golf course, which I apologize, the visual impact analysis worked fine on my computer, but Christopher is trying to help us out to get that to show you. The new system we're working through.
And this area here along Riverton Point is about a fifty-foot buffer between the back lots, and so then between us and the back of the lots is approximately seventy-five feet.
Or that'll be undisturbed. So seventy-five total of undisturbed.
If you jump the fifty feet, it's on Riverton.
Okay. And then so there is, so there is, I was trying to find initials in here as well.
There is in the PUD, there is a buffer plan, it's around sixty-three or sixty-four.
Which one?
If you have a PUD in.
See if you could pull it up. I'm going to try to pull it from our chair drive, I think that might be, so bear with me for a second.
I walked up and helped them find it.
Sure.
You got it, yeah. That's the page of information, so go back, a few more pages. This is the actual, we have a lot of, so there's a, there's a lot of, this is all the wetlands area here, adjacent to the golf course, so that will be all undisturbed. And then again, like she said, there's a, there's a large berm along here that it ran down.
She's on her way over to make sure that we get that up for you. It'll take just a minute. I don't know if you want to take a break while we're getting that done, or if you want to continue on with these questions.
Well, let's continue if we can with questions. The reason I ask is, so we'll get it for the video.
I may have additional questions once we get there, but I'm, I'm okay right now.
Okay. The parking spaces that are laid out, that's where you...
Yes, sir.
Does that include the garage, or is that in addition to the garage?
Each one will have two spaces in front of the unit, and then the garages don't actually count to that number.
Okay, so that will be in addition, the garage will be in addition. And how many individual units are in each building?
So they range from, the smallest would be three, three, so this building here is three townhomes.
Okay.
And the max is six, which is this one here. The most of them are three, three, four, five.
And, and I'm not sure if I followed, we addressed, we're going to put some parking down by the amenities?
Similarly to how we did this here, where we showed this parking along this amenity space, we're going to ba, we're basically going to add those here. And we'll just shift the sidewalk down a little bit to accommodate for that. And we'll just shift the sidewalk down a little bit and, and accommodate for that.
I, I, I have a couple of questions. In the presentation here, it says, "The success of the business has come from building the best efficient homes for the," and I think the next word is supposed to be underserved?
Mm-hmm.
Homebuyer? What, what is the underserved homebuyer? What does that mean?
We're looking to try to, these, um, these units are trying to be priced, right, priced between three hundred and three fifty. So we're trying to meet that, um, that middle market right now.
By underserved, you mean affordable?
Affordable. Yeah, oh, yeah, can't, yeah, affordable is a fun, fun word.
Yeah, and, and then the, where is the communal fire pit?
So it, it will be adjacent to the, uh, the community, uh, pavilion here.
Okay, will that be, at, at one point here, you say you'll, that, um, you'll have gas on site if necessary? I assume that would be necessary.
Yep, for that.
At one point here, you, you talked about the, uh, dry aisles and parking for the project will be privately owned and maintained by the Property Owners Association. So like, like an HMO?
Yes, sir.
Or an HOA.
HOA.
And then, uh, uh, later you, you talk about the, um, the outdoor building and entertaining community fire pit, wanting to feel will be owned by, the Queen of Hearts or some others or signs. Why isn't that owned by the?
It'll be the same.
Or will it?
It'll be the HOA, yeah, once it, once the property gets assigned to the HOA.
And they will be responsible for all of the maintenance?
Yes, sir.
The traffic impact study, I'm always interested in the figure that, that gets used for the projected additional traffic in the future. And I think in yours, I think it says five percent. I, I may ask this question, I'm not sure I understand the answer. Where does that five percent come from?
So it's based on, uh, your, the growth that you have going on in, in Hardyville.
Yeah, okay, where, where, how did you arrive at five percent?
Um, so I mean, we just look at how, how you've been growing and then how we project that out to, um, to the li, to the full extent of the study. So we take, we take your population growth that you've had up to the date of the study, and then we take that same, we, we basically take that same growth model and show that throughout.
Well. You know, in your traffic study, I, I'm not, I'm not terribly proficient at traffic study, but in your traffic study, some of the numbers that they use for additions on addition trips in different segments is more than five percent. And I still don't understand where the five percent comes from. I mean, is that, are you saying that we've had five percent growth? I think we've had more than five percent growth. I mean, is it specific to that area or not?
Yes, it's specific.
Specific to that area or all of Hardyville? I'm, I'm trying to figure out how you come up with that.
It's all of Hardyville. We can't look at just East Argent and say, all right, East Argent's grown at, you know, six, six percent or whatever. We have to take the, the data that we have.
Okay, well then, I gotta tell you, I think East Argent is growing faster than all of Hardyville. I mean, Hardyville's a huge geographic area. Some areas are growing much faster than others.
And I think on, on the traffic study, I'll say, we've done the traffic study for, um, Sun City, the expansion of Sun City, we did the traffic study for that. We've done the traffic study for the, um, development just north of here, which is a multifamily development, and we've done this one. So we're well aware of the traffic here in, and, and East Argent and Argent Park.
And all, and this traffic study does include all of the known other traffic generators and all those other traffic studies that have been done. They go back and use that as, you know, the base as well. So it's, we don't look at it. Um, and we did ha, we did have a third party, um, traffic consultant review this, um, Stan Tech, and they did agree with the numbers used in the study as well.
And, and so that takes into account the school that's going to develop the house as well?
Yes, all of those known, um, developments that we have in the works, um, are all included in this.
Yep.
And, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I will say that what, we did use an expert company, third party on the city's behalf, not on their behalf, and they did agree with it.
Well, I have the advantage.
I'm saying five percent, I'll say the five percent is above the growth we already know that's coming.
And, and this five percent is in addition to that, is that right?
Right.
But I have the advantage of not being an expert and not knowing much about, I mean, if I were an expert, I guess I would accept the five percent if that's the way that you own their life better. But, you know, my vantage point is I've lived there and there, and I can tell you that in the eight years that I've lived there, the growth has been, I would attest to more than five percent. I think the next ten years, uh, the growth will be much more than ten percent. Then, that's a non-expert op, opinion, but, you know, we do these traffic projections, they aren't perfect, they're guesses, but I, I just question the five percent, that's.
I mean, as far as what's known in the area, you've got a two thousand lot subdivision on the north side of East Argent that's already has an initial master plan and is under, undergo a design now. You have a school on the north side, you have the YMCA, you have the, uh, Publix, you also have, uh, mansions and a tenant, um, living facility, and then there's two other residential south of where the school is going.
And there, there's also some, some substantial commercial areas there. And as those areas grow, I mean, there's more traffic that comes through from either end. It's just, I mean, we're looking for a traffic study that gives us guidance, but I, I don't know, I, I guess I would hope for a better explanation as to how he shows the figure five percent.
I can, I can talk to the line traffic engineer and get a better explanation of it.
I also, I also wanted to make a point about some of these, uh, letters from the utilities, which are sometimes referred to as capacity and intent letters. You know, we have the capacity and the intent to serve you. You know, the, the first one that I noticed here is not a utility, it's the Army Corps of Engineers, and, uh, you have to have the, I think they call them AJD studies. The one that you have in here says that it's good for five years, and five years is next week. So, I mean, I, I, I have no doubt that you can get one, but you don't have it in here.
Right.
The ones you have from the utility companies don't have the expiration date on them. Sometimes they do. These do not. We know that they don't last forever. The ones that you have in here are twenty years old, twenty years old. I, I would hope before you get to see canceled, you will replace them with current life.
Those are the letters for all of East Argent, and then, and, and.
Maybe, but they're twenty years old.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I mean, it, it is a requirement of the application that you have these. I have no doubt that you, I mean, we've never had a project that didn't get them, but I just wanted to point out to you. And, and again, I, I made a point earlier about the traffic study where those areas in there where the individual intersections show growth, they, in your projection, they're much higher than five percent, some of them much higher than five percent. So, I mean, that, that's a concern I have. Did you?
And so this is the visual impact that we're showing, um, at this, so this is from the, um, across the golf hole from the backyards of this neighborhood, Riverton Point. Looking across, that's just the bottom view here. So you've got the lagoon, you've got the golf course up here. This is the, um, the mounted, um, berm that we have between the, the sites, and so this is a two story and a three story. The two stories would be your most adjacent, um, product, and then the internal would be the three story. And then also similarly, we're looking from the back of this home here, and with that buffer, with the existing trees that, that we're maintaining, that's how the, how it would basically be for somebody even in, in their backyard.
So the line that separates the horizontal line, that's the difference between a one story, or sorry, a two story and a three story?
Correct.
The difference shades are gray, doesn't it?
But, the, the, um, that's just a difference, I'm sorry. The green is the, the green is the third floor, the gray are the two stories.
Okay, so the third, the third floor is fifty feet.
Correct. Now that fifty feet is just up to fifty feet. Sorry, I'm just trying.
Is this the top of the?
That's the top.
That's the top of the third story.
Yep, and that fifty feet.
Which those are all internal.
Correct. The top of that would be roughly thirty feet.
Oh, okay, I got you. So the fifty, okay, alright, I'm trying.
Fifty feet is the allowable height.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I'm not going to hang on this subject very yet. Just took a look here at my calculations, which are probably wrong. S- some of the, you know, you, you're talking about a five percent increase over five years. Your projections for these intersections are ten year projections. Some of them are thirty percent increases. One of them I have here is above thirty-three percent.
Right.
Doesn't make sense to me that, that some of these intersections are increasing trips by thirty-three, more than thirty-three percent, and that total projection is, I, I, again, I mean, I'm just.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman, for, for bringing this up, cause this is something that is, is very confusing, the way they do traffic studies and their projecting. We will have a, a traffic engineer, um, here for the next planning commission to go through how they come up with these different numbers and what that means. So that might help you through your, your processes. But, um, like Katie mentioned, we've had our third party review it, and we are comfortable with what they're, how, maybe we don't quite understand all the details, but we're, we're comfortable with what they're projecting.
Okay, and, you know, I, I, it, it seems to me, looking at these traffic studies, that that five percent figure looks like a standard figure to me. It looks like, you know, the increase will be five percent or whatever project, but, but that's not really in the real world. Not, there's some projects that don't have five percent increases, and some projects have, you know, much more than five percent. And that, that's, that's my concern here. And, um, I, I, I really relish the opportunity, look forward to the opportunity, to have a traffic expert explain why it's a standard five percent that does not intuitively seem correct. Anybody have anything else that they want to, if not, this is the, the time for public comment on this project. If there's any public comment, we'll ask you to come to the podium and to state your name. This, this is, is to be on, on this project, and, well, uh, if there's a lot of comment, we would hope that you would try not to be repetitive.
And, um, say your name and address for the record, and you have a three minute limit, please. Thank you.
Wow. My name's longer than your name. My name's Dawn, I'm Adloner. I live, um, in Riverton Point, a three eighty-five Laurel Oak. I work with Rusty and the Orange Capital Group, um, on the farmhouse project, which is on the north end of this proposed development. I have lots of questions, but first I would like to see if you could take that off of there, please, so I can see the map. Okay, um.
We'll give you the time for that.
Oh, okay. Um, my first comment is that, and, and someone else will speak to this about how we were notified of the project, and I'm going to let someone else speak to that. But, um, we would like some specific details, or I would, because I don't understand a lot that's on the map. My first comment is, it looks like a barricade. It looks like, you know, army barricade things. I'm not against affordable housing. I live in the inner city and my other house, so I understand the need for affordable housing, but there's, the design element is lacking very much so from this project. The other thing, there's way too many streets, the concrete, there's so many streets here, it just goes on and on and on. I think the whole design could be, um, better done without so many streets. I mean, every building has a street in front of it and behind it. That's not a normal neighborhood, am I? Where I, where I, where I live and where I'm from. The garage issues are a question. Are they one car garages? Are they two car garages? Are the garages underneath the building? Are they on the side of the building? Do they come in from the back, or do they come in from the front? That's huge. We need to know those answers, because if you have a three bedroom unit with a one car garage and six people are living in a unit, maybe up to ten people, affordable housing, this is what happens with affordable housing. Somebody buys the house, and then the aunts and the uncles and the cousins, and everybody comes. There, it's not going to be three cars in that unit. There could be six, eight cars in the unit. Where are these other cars going to park? That's a huge question. There's not enough parking here. I think the density is very, is way too dense in this project, way, way, way too dense. The amenities, a fire pit on our golf course, I don't think is going to be a very good idea. The side, the buffer in the front. Okay, I'll stop and let other people take. I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Michael Lewis. I live at eight ninety-six Oakwood Drive, and, uh, my concern is safety, traffic safety. Uh, I frequently take, uh, that particular road heading east on two seventy-eight, pulling off on Arden Road, where I rarely take that, uh, route where there's not an accident, because there's no light there. There has to be some safety precautions put in, turning on, off, turning off of two seventy-eight onto Arden Road. Uh, that would be my concern, and join, uh, you, Mr. Foreman, in terms of that estimate.
Good morning. Name is Chris Newbern. I live at six twenty-two Riverton Point Boulevard. I'm a native of the Low Country and have seen this area change dramatically over the last thirty years. You know, congested roads, twelve months of construction season, and long lines of my favorite restaurants are just a few of the things that we all experienced for sure. Uh, today, I'm here on behalf of the residents of Riverton Point, but also the residents of the Townhouse Community. I mean, we need to speak for them as well. Riverton Point's a vibrant community, it's growing. We appreciate the benefits of thoughtful development, and the key word here is thoughtful, for sure. Uh, new projects are going to come and go for sure, and we really just want to say, let's take a comprehensive approach to development and be collaborative as we move forward with this. We urge you to consider and ensure that roads, utilities, public services can all support the increased demand. Preserving green space for sure is one of our top concerns as we look to preserve the character of the Low Country community. One of our most important concerns is the preservation of the buffer zones that we've already talked about here briefly. Uh, I live at six twenty-two, it's right behind the, the two townhome unit there that's on the schematic. Walk back there with tape measures. You know, we have twenty-five feet off of Toll Brother from our property line, Toll Brother. The proposal is another twenty-five. That doesn't add up to seventy-five just yet. And one of the concerns is, the density back there is pulp pines. You know, once you start cutting, you know, with much larger equipment there, you're going to see through, you know, the undergrowth there. So we definitely want to consider, you know, what that buffer could mean, because, you know, buffers are known obviously to protect privacy, uh, to protect property values, and essentially a benefit for everyone. As indicated, we do invite, you know, transparency as we go forward, and the communities of all interested parties to continue to work together there. We think we can build trust, uh, we can ensure that the development is thoughtful, and as you look at what we've seen today, for sure, there's some thought given to this, but we think there's more to be given. And we also recognize that you can have thoughtful development that's still profitable, and I think we're not there yet, but if we work together, we can sure get there. You know, importantly, we at Riverton Point have worked collaboratively as a result of our farmhouse community project that we've been involved in. And so from that standpoint, you know, we do want to engage in a timely manner. We do want to work with the developer and the city to do as much as we can to continue to move progress forward, but to continue to keep that focus, you know, on thoughtful development. In closing, we simply ask that growth in our community be managed with careful consideration of its impact on the existing neighborhood of Riverton Point. You know, in that regard, notification letters were only recently received, and some of those have not been received by anyone. And so from that point, we essentially respectfully ask that maybe table discussion to give us time to work with the developer and to see if we can move. time to work with the developer and to see if we can move this project forward with a little bit more thought. Thank you.
Good job.
Are the new notifications in effect?
I'm sorry.
So, they are in effect at, for the next planning commission meeting. However, the adjacent property owners to this were notified. It just wouldn't be for people across the street to it. The adjacent, excuse me, we did, they did go beyond, but the adjacent, there's a lot of it that's adjacent to Riverton Point Common Area. And so Riverton, so Toll was also notified. And so, the way that you have the new ordinance will help with this in the future. I can tell you that we did get a number of calls fairly quickly, about, just over a week ago, they started coming in. And so, we have been trying to get the information out. We've emailed how to access the project information on our website, and we've offered for people to come in and look at it as well. But we didn't have anybody take us up on that, but we did get it out on the website as well. So we tried our best as we transition into the new requirements.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is John Ruggieri. I live at 1661 Laurel Oak Avenue in Riverton Point. I've been asked by the Riverton Point Property Owners Group to address your body about some of the observations that we have. And we try to stay within the allotted time rather than going through a lot of detail. I would like to, thank you very much, I would like to hand this out, and you'll see on there on the top page, there are five things that... I've provided some additional graphics of the interior of this, if you want to refer to that. But before I go there, I do want to compliment staff. That was a very nice presentation, and it's not always that that occurs in other municipalities. Our major concern is that this project appears rushed. We were not notified properly. Of the seventeen property owners that are within the five hundred feet along the Boulevard, only one received notification. The first notification that we got was received ten days ago by a non-property owner in Arizona, who informed us that there is a project going on adjoining our property. Obviously, there's an error in here. As such, we want, we don't know if the applicant fulfilled their legal responsibilities for notification. Based upon that, and several of the other issues that we have, those issues are related to just not having enough time to be able to review the proposal and offer constructive input on how something can be built there that serves the larger community in a way that we all want. I'm not going to go back and repeat some of the comments that were made from a lot of the residents, or a few of the residents that we have here. By the way, we have a lot of residents that are not here today that are well aware of this project. We appreciate comments that you have all made and want to second that. And as such, we have a formal letter that we'd like to present to you for the continuance of the project based upon the inadequacy of the documentation that we received, even though it was two-hundred-and-fifty-eight pages. It looks like it's been rushed. The details are just not there. The setbacks and the buffers that were presented, I don't want to say that there is a mistake in it, but they are inconsistent with the analysis that we have done, and you can refer to it. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
For your service.
Good morning. I'm Sue Moore. I live at 552 Riverton Point Boulevard, which is one of the four to five properties that are directly in line with that amenities area that you show on the map. And all of the discussion of the buffer that I've heard so far indicates the area which, facing from Riverton Point Boulevard, is to the left of the cart path. Our properties are to the right of the cart path, and we are going to be directly on that. There's no space, there's no green space, there's no anything else. I'm really concerned that the setback be taken care of. I agree with everything that the John and Chris have said already, but I want to add one thing I learned. I didn't get the notification in my mailbox. I got notified by my informed delivery that there was a certified letter for me. I had to drive to the post office three days later to get it, and the clerk behind the counter said to me, "You're not the first person who's been in. No one's been getting them." We didn't get notice that that was there. We didn't get that. Come pick up your certified letter, or we'll bring it back to you, notice. We got none of that. So we really were uninformed in a timely manner, and I do appreciate the fact that you'll take that into your consideration.
Katie, can I just, can we just make a comment about the notifications? Okay, so, a couple of months ago, we actually gave our recommendation to city council to broaden the adjacent, the notification standards, because they did not meet. I'm personally similar. I had a development built behind my house, I had no idea. One of the reasons I've wanted to come onto the planning commission. So I was aware of these things. So, the notification, we totally understand that, and that it's going, it is, and everything takes forever, I understand why, but we'll make sure that gets out, because we recommended that it's not just certified mail, that it's also regular mail, because...
That's what council adopted. It would be a lot both ways.
Perfect, so...
Good morning. I'm Deb Thompson. I live in Riverton Point, I'm 700 Laurel Oak Avenue. And Donna and a few of us were, worked with Rusty on the farmhouse project. And first of all, thank you so much for your service. We greatly appreciate what you do. Just a couple of quick comments. The main concern for us, aside from the view, is safety. Safety is very important. And what's important, the difference between the farmhouse project and this project, is that with the farmhouse project, you had quite a berm up there. So, we could move around those three- and four-story apartment buildings and protect the view. Here, in front of Sue's house, it dips down, and it's almost level at that point. So you will have people at that amenity center that could walk right through into her backyard, into their backyards. So that's something to consider with regard to that. We tried very hard to get a fence put up along the back of the farmhouse project. I definitely think that we need to increase buffer, and also talk about putting up a fence to protect, so people don't come in. I mean, let's face it, especially if we have a fire pit and there's a golf course right there, we know what's going to happen with that. The other thing I'll make a comment about is just in regard to the alleyways with that project. I have been involved in development in Bluffton, and I have seen what happens with those alleyways, and they're left to the POAs to maintain. So potholes, gravel, lakes, et cetera. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard, did you want to say something?
Dave Kirk. I live at 578 Laurel Oak Cabinet in Riverton Point. I'm one of those people that was never notified in any way. There was no way, except through our website, you know, through our Facebook page. That was not enough time to look at anything. And I'm sure that you folks have had it, and I really appreciate all the work that you've put into it, but there just needs to be more time. We just need to see what's going on here. So, I'm really second what John was saying. We need to push for that continuance. It's something that's just necessary in this situation. There's just too many questions. The precedent of how large the buffer was, when the farmhouse project, when we did the farmhouse project with Rusty and the team, that precedent has been wiped away, wiped clean. Let's start talking from that precedent, as opposed to start basically from a zero lot line. So let's start having conversations which we haven't been a part of, and that's why we're pushing for the continuance in a big way. Right?
Hi, I'm Donna Becker. I live at 752 Riverton Point Boulevard, and I'd like to yield my time to John Ruggieri.
Good job. Thanks, Donna.
All right, once again, I'm not going to take up too much time, not that I can. I'd like to just discuss one point as illustrative to this whole issue of not being prepared. If staff could advance the slide, or if I hecking do this, to the visualization, the buffer, the distances between the houses. Thank you. Okay. This is very nice, but based upon Google Earth and all of the data that we can now pull off of the internet and looking at the local conditions, we need to go back in and take a look at the visualizations. I think that they're not exactly what we're seeing on our side of the fence. The distance between the back of the house and the property line on the lower section, the distance is correct, but the relationship between what's out there and how it's represented, there's an inaccuracy here. The same thing with the top. It's interesting, the viewpoint from where the top section is, goes diagonally across, not directly to the units that are directly behind the houses. It's significantly less, and there's no buffer. There's a question about the topography, and we need to understand that topography and really what the buffer is between there. So, I just wanted to say that. I don't want to harp on anything else. I just wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about not having enough time to discuss some things with the proponent and come up with a solution. Thank you very much.
I do want to add, I just want to remind everybody, this is just the first step in the process. There are a number of meetings. There will most likely be a council workshop, typically is on this type of development, as well as first and second reading of city council as well. So, I just want to let the audience know, there is more of a process than just this meeting today is not the end of everything if they do make a recommendation to proceed. So, I just want, hopefully that helps.
Hi, my name is Debbie Duncan, and I'm at 620 Laurel Oak. And I have a question about, we know the traffic is going to be crazy, whether it's five percent or whatever. Who takes care of the road? Right now, that's just basically a cart path through there. Who puts in the lines, and is it going to be a two-lane parkway in there, and that sort of thing? And who takes care of that, and when is it done? Is it done before the development, or during the development, or is it done through the state, and we're at the bottom of the totem pole, and it might be done in the next fifteen or twenty years?
Which road are you clarifying, to clarify?
East Argent Parkway, they're calling it in the proposal. I didn't know it was a parkway, but...
East Argent Parkway?
Yes.
It is a little bit more than a cart path. Excuse me, I'm a engineer.
Excuse me.
It is on the other end.
What we're going to do here is, when we have completed all the public comments, I'm going, as Jordan, to respond to a number of these. I'm making a list of things, and I'll ask for his points, or if he has any.
Thank you for...
And then all the members of the commission will all have a comment.
Robert Cohn, 1576 Azalia Drive in Riverton Point. So, I want to speak to, you know, approved uses in the, you know, PDD. So, if something is thirty acres and it's an approved use, I still think traffic and safety overrides that. I don't think that if you have thirty acres and it's an approved use, then it's an automatic, that you can still look at safety issues. And, you know, I measured it today in my car, and in a third of a mile, there's access to Twin Lakes, Riverton Point, Sun City, what's going to be New Sun City, the farmhouse apartments, and now this. So those are access, and I think that when this Argent Loop is widened, that's going to be a major shortcut. People are going to say, "I'm not going to go up, you know, Argent, and I'm not going to go that way. I'm just going to go through and go past the YMCA and then cut out, you know, a couple of miles." So those cars are coming in, and all of this use and density is, has to get in there. And there's not going to be any lights, and we're going to be right back to where it was when we were, there's no light in Argent where you feel like you're taking your life in your hands, because there's going to be traffic. So I just would ask that the new traffic study consider all this extra potential traffic that might be coming in, where people are just going to go use that as a shortcut. And it's going to be dangerous just coming in with all these units. So, if there's ninety-five hundred units allowed in the PDD, and four thousand of them are in a half a mile, I just don't think that that's a reasonable allocation of how the PDD was supposed to even be back in the 2007 or whenever it was done. There still has to be a mixed use for the cultural, for the benefit, for open space, and safety for all the residents. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Rhonda Holly. I live at 472 Riverton Point. And if you look at that other map, I'm right on that corner. And I moved here from Pennsylvania for a lot of reasons. And I built in Riverton Point for a lot of reasons. First was the view. We are not backed up against anything but two homes, and that was the reason we paid a premium for that home. I have very little sound right now, because I picked that lot and I paid a premium for that lot. And I intentionally built a home in a gated community. Where's the gate that's going to be in that corner of that map? And those are my three biggest concerns, because I'm here for certain reasons, and this is taking away every reason that I have, that I built this home. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? I know that the other members of the planning commission have additional comments based on what's been said, but first I want to ask Jordan to address some of these things.
Rusty?
And I made a list here of, I've made a list here of topics, if you want to respond to any of these.
Sure.
The issue that was raised about the garage and the number of parking spots, they wanted a description of what the garage was like, and how many spots per...
I think what we could do at council, we will bring elevations of each one, and what front elevations for each, how it will look.
Did you want to address that now, though? How many spaces in the garages, and how many spaces at each?
So they'll have you between one and two spaces in the garages, and then they'll have two spaces at each home outside of that. And then we have twenty-nine spaces above and beyond that. That will actually go and wind up in more than that, because it adds more parking along the south side. So we'll probably be in like around thirty to forty spaces, you know, range of additional for overflow. And I mean, that's the purpose of it. I mean, yes, there's guests that come in and everything too, but also, like you said, like you said earlier too, is that we know people have more, some people have more than two cars per family, and so it allows them the space to be able to park.
Okay. The issue of buffers was also raised repeatedly. Would you want to address that?
I mean, I feel like that by the fact that these are two stories, I heard a precedent was set by the Orange Capital site. And one of the largest buffers on there was, I believe, a total of one-hundred-and-fifty. That was adjacent to a three-story apartment building. And it reduced down from there to a minimum of twenty-five, adjacent to the maintenance facility. And on the maintenance facility, there is zero buffer on the maintenance facility side. And so, I do, I will double-check the measurements and everything, but I do believe from the back of those lots to the property line is... back of those lots to the property line is a minimum of 50 feet. And then we're proposing 25 on top of that. So, that's a 75-foot total buffer. And I don't want to argue about it. I just, I'll verify.
Yeah, so you're saying that the minimum is 50 feet setback and then a 25-foot buffer? How about behind the amenity center that was specifically raised?
On the, you're talking about the, on the right of the drawing? That's the area, yes.
I think, I think there's some confusion because the fire pit coming up, but the fire pit's over.
He said the middle center, the other side.
Yeah, this is where the fire pit will be?
Yeah.
This, this over, on this area over on the right here?
It's amenity space.
This will be a passive amenity space. There will not be any active components in that area.
And what will the setback and buffer be there?
So, the setback there, the buffer is 25 feet along this section, plus the 50 feet on the other side.
Mr. Foreman, may I, yeah, add something?
Let's have Jordan finish up here. Rusty, finish up and then...
I just have a suggestion on the buffer.
How about this notice issue? What can you tell us about it?
So, the notice was sent out via certified mail on September 26th. And we did send it out to the 500, even though it wasn't approved at the time or whatever, but we just sent it out to the 500. I apologize that some people didn't receive it, or maybe the post office didn't give them their slip that they were supposed to come and get it or whatever, but it was mailed out on the 26th.
But they didn't send it regular mail? It's not, it's not approved.
Somebody raised the issue of perhaps providing a fence for the area. What would your reaction be to that?
It'd be similar to what we said with Orange Capital. By the time you go in there and you build a fence, we can't just go in and build a fence in a one-foot section. You had to face it, you need five to 10 feet to be able to build a fence. So, in that five to 10 feet, you're going to wind up tearing out most or a portion of that buffer that we're trying to maintain. And so, as far as the, you know, people being able to access back and forth, I, you know, that's, that is not required in a PUD, and it's not required of the, of the city to maintain that.
Issue was raised, I was about to say, the elevation views and whether the perspective that you're looking at it from is the closest property or something further away?
We can adjust those visuals where we had to turn just slightly instead of looking straight across. We can adjust that for the next one. But as far as the wooded area and everything, we'll go back and verify and double-check it, but that's based on, we use the same thing. Google Earth is where we got most of that imagery from.
Do you know, if you chose the closest place, would it change the elevation so that you could see or would see the town?
I think it's in Chrome. There you go. Thank you. So, if you, if, I'll flip back and forth. That home there that we have on the screen is...
My house.
It's your house. Is this home right here? So, it is, it is the closest one.
Would you want to check that, I guess? I want to ask if you wanted to address, and this is not an issue that is specific to the developer, to this developer, but there were a number of issues that were raised about road maintenance and traffic signals and what should be done there and what the timeframe would be for that.
So, Argent, and Argent is Argent, there is a light there, and that was, that was very good for the city of the town and everything else. 278 and Argent, my understanding is that is being currently designed from...
I think that might be a better question for staff.
Okay, fine, yeah. That's all this time. Is there any else that you wanted to address based on what we said?
I mean, on my list of things that probably have better clarification on before we get to, before we get to council, or at the council meeting, clarification on the garages, parking, the density, I mean, the allowed use here is eight units per acre, and we're at 5.1. So, we're definitely less dense than we are. Open space, we're at 41% open space on this. That's, that's a substantial amount of open space and everything. The, and then... And the dense question, visual, okay, yeah, that's all that.
Okay, and Rhonda, you want to, you or other staff, want to say anything?
I have a couple of things I want to add, and, no, that's all right. My badge always likes, I apologize for that. First of all, since I was the most recent one, I heard East Argent Parkway and the road system and traffic. The traffic study that keeps being referred to was for the entirety of East Argent, and I think I'm saying that correctly. And it was done, it has been looked at numerous times with every new development that's coming in. So, it's not just, it's looking at all of what we call that background information. So, I don't know if the growth rate is really, but it certainly has all of those other developments included in it. East Argent Parkway is currently being finished up. That's been a cooperation, collaboration with the developer of Preserve Development and the city. Ultimately, the city will take over maintenance of that road, ultimately, with the understanding and help from the developer. It will be widened, the pathways will be put on. So, there were a lot of improvements planned for East Argent Parkway, including bike lanes, I like to mention pathways, multi-purpose paths, with the improvements at both ends of East Argent Parkway for what the traffic signals and other things. Obviously, the city, the state, other jurisdictions are looking at Argent Boulevard, are looking at other things, that triangle where Sun City, the original, Hardyville Sun City sits in the middle. So, there's a lot of traffic improvements, a lot of programs going on with that. It's not being done in a vacuum. I just wanted to put that out there. That is a city thing, and we will be looking at that. As far as the discussion on the buffers and the fencing, what we've done in some more recent projects, and we didn't get the chance when we were meeting with the developers of this, Rusty's client and everything, but what we've been, is suggested by council and our city manager has been what we're calling a living fence. And it's, and it's a fence that people, I mean, it's vegetation, but it's not the vegetation that people are going to just walk through. And that's the kind of thing we can, you can ask that the developer, that the applicant look into, to come up with. We've used it in Latitude and Morgan, we've used it in other places, Okati Crossings and Sun City. So, it is, it provides the buffer and the screening, but it also provides that safety net. And it's, we use native, fast-growing lands and make that work. That's a suggestion that staff would make to you. Those are the things I remember. And if you have any other things from staff, we can certainly, and Katie was right, there's a lot of meetings still to be had on this project. So, we look forward to working on it.
I know that, I think all the members of the planning commission would like to say something. I'm looking at Rick Rosell first.
The first thing that I have to talk about is the notice. There's no one here that's, that does not like people not getting noticed more than me. It's been very high on my radar. I would like to see that we get to the point where we don't have that discussion because I just don't see why notice is this difficult. I'm not interested in what the minimum is, I'm wondering what the max is. Now, I know we can't stretch it out. You get two years, and I've heard this recently, and I agree with it. We could give you two years notice and it wouldn't be enough if it was my own being affected. However, I think that some of the mistakes that are being made are just too suspicious. I, I don't see why notice is that difficult. And we, but we have been working on that very recently, and we've got some new changes that are being implemented now. And I hope that we're moving in the right track there. So, my point is, that's very important to us. We've had many heated discussions recently, ever since, what, the last six or eight months. Second, the elevation, the charts, yes, you can look at this and tell that it might be a little misleading. I agree with that, it's in a solid. However, the 50-foot up front, you can't do but so much. Unfortunately, when you buy property, everything around you, when it's wooded, it looks like a preserve, but the next landowner does have the right to come in and develop the same as yours. I'm just glad that we're not looking at a warehouse. We have, we have, we deal with hard problems here. This one, I hate to, I hate to say, but this, this isn't that bad. And I can tell you that I've lived here all my life for 55 years. When I, I remember being here when 278 didn't exist, there was nothing in Okati, and we're going to have development. So, I want you to know that it breaks my heart to see this as much as the next guy. And we are very sympathetic, and we are working real hard to get these buffers as good as we can get them. We can only go so far, though, because the same developer that built the house, the development for you, the next guy has the right to do the same thing. So, we're going to do our very best to do the best we can, but just know, we are limited to that. The property that is around you is going to change, just like my home here has changed dramatically. But we'll do our very best. On the fence, we've been, a lot of discussion on this live fence buffer, and, you know, you can get across anything. If somebody wants to break into your house, they'll go through anything. And I think that it might be because of the maintenance issue, what she's described, it's starting to make a lot of sense to me. So, you might really consider finding out more about that because unmaintained fence is an ugly thing. And that's all that I have.
All right, there's a lot of issues here that were brought up by the residents in the area. Way too many to cover today, I think. I would like to see a little workshop so we can start addressing as many of these as possible and satisfy the residents that live there as well as you.
I just want to say, I appreciate every single one of you that got up and talked today. I think it's important, seriously, do you need to kind of talk and let us know? Because if no one, if we were to walk in here and there was an empty room, obviously we'd go, "Hey, I guess everyone's good with it." Because we, right, council, our planning commission, we know that these, the work is being done and the notifications, we can only hope that that's work is being done, so we look forward to that. But I just want to thank each and every one of you for getting up in front and talking to us and telling you, or telling us how you feel about the proposed project.
I'd really appreciate the comments, too. I thought, I thought the comments from the citizens were unusually articulate, direct, and specific. That was very, very helpful. Also, we maintained order better than in some occasions in the past, which I really appreciate. If I can commiserate in front of you for a moment, you know, I, I know that every member of this planning commission works hard and tries to do the very best they can. For example, you know, the notice discussion today follows on after several meetings in a row where the planning commission reviewed and recommended changes, which council has adopted and which are, I take it from our staff discussion, about to be in effect. And I wish they would have been in effect, but that worked out the way it did. You know, I think all the members of the planning commission, I'll speak for myself, you know, it's sometimes very frustrating that we're in discussion with the community, and there's only so much that we can do. And we're precluded by law from taking some things into consideration that each of us might like to. We also have all kinds of time constraints, which is only fair to the developers. We can't keep putting them off forever. You know, one thing that I learned very quickly on the planning commission is that whatever is being proposed, people would prefer that it be a council. So, we don't have to say that. There's never a vote on what it should be. Our vote is really on what is proposed. And our, our b-way is, you know, whether the, whether it meets the requirements of the law. In other words, you know, here you have a development, and I'm speaking about not this development, but the larger PDD, that, you know, has already authorized X numbers of units, and has already authorized a certain density, and has already authorized uses and things that we and the mayor and city council are precluded from changing. This is, you know, these are legal requirements. So, we don't get to go in and say, "Hey, we want your, you know, we want all the streets to be wider, we want all the sidewalks to be nicer, we want..." That's, that's not something that we are able to do, as much as we would like to and as much as we are probably frustrated from time to time. But nonetheless, it was an unusually good presentation by the citizens today, and I think, I think we're all taking that to heart. I'm very disturbed by the notice problem. You know, not just that everybody here has tried to make that situation better. I mean, our, our discussion about those changes was not, for example, whether there should be a greater distance of people that are notified, it was just how large should that be? And not, should there be, you know, a greater attempt to make sure that these things are delivered, but just how will we do that? So, everybody was in agreement on that. And, you know, it's, I feel that it is so unfortunate that this got stuck as the last project for the new, I'll say, better notice requirements are in effect. I'd like to, before we proceed with anything, I'd like to ask staff what our time constraints are in terms of my concern about deeming approvals.
You are on the master plan, you are in good shape, sir, to, to... Able or ask for a workshop or whatever you have?
You're saying there is no deeming requirement that will be, that will be a fact?
Not for a master plan. It's different with different types of applications. This is a master plan, not a zoning check.
Yes. Rusty, I'd like to ask you what your reaction would be if it were to continue this and ask you to come back with the specifics that you have mentioned, for example, the elevation checking and so on?
I think that I would be more than reasonable for it to continue to a workshop with the council.
Well, wouldn't, I mean, the council can have the workshop, but, I mean, we wouldn't be making the recommendation, we'd be continuing before we make a recommendation.
I mean, time constraints, everything else with the purchaser, they're really tight on this as far as when they, when they got to close on this property and everything else and had any extra time, they, they would, they would really prefer to keep this moving towards council would be the, would be our recommendation for it.
Okay, that's a fair reaction. Does anybody have any motion or any further comments?
If we're, yes, if we are moving to a workshop. The, the one thing that I am interested in is the open space. We need to really start considering what open space is, what's the intent of it, and looking at that picture, does that meet what the intent of open space is? Right now, I'm seeing everything to the left before the first house, or I say, I say the bulk of open space. And I want you to look at, hard at that. I think, I think we need to start moving towards figuring out what the intent of open space is and making sure that it's being applied. and making sure that it's being applied to the job, or to the project. And then we can discuss that when we have this workshop, if we have this workshop.
But we, we don't do the workshop, correct?
Yeah, we, this is a public hearing.
Right. We would have to prove for it to go to a workshop.
Okay, you can have a workshop, Planning Commission can have a workshop, but typically built into the process is for council to have a workshop, and you don't have control over that.
Right.
Your responsibility is to make a recommendation for approval, make a recommendation for denial, or changes, or table it and have either, like we did with Pleasant Brook, we had another meeting, and, or a workshop. So, you have options, but your workshop would not replace necessarily the council's workshop.
Just wanted to make sure, I wasn't aware that we did workshops since the first.
You, you have the ability to, but it's done, usually done at the council.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
I mean, I, I would make a motion to table this, so that we can make sure the notification goes out. And that we, I, I can't, in good conscience, I can't.
I, I would, I would object to that a little bit, because we did it per the books, we did it per what was required of us. And we actually went beyond, we went to five hundred feet. There, we sent out forty-eight notifications.
And so you sent out certified and regular mail?
Certified.
So, regular mail is also part of the new ordinance? It is.
When, when we were giving them the information, it was not. We, we, it was certified and not, but we-
And, and honestly, a lot of people know about this that are here.
We're here for a different reason.
We're not disputing that, I mean, obviously, people found out, that's not the issue. My issue is, there's a lot of questions and concerns that those residents that have been here have on the project. And I think they need to be addressed in order to get it moving to the next step. That's my opinion.
Is there a second to the motion for continuing this to the next meeting?
Are we doing a workshop before that, or are we not doing a workshop?
No, we, we would be continuing the public hearing again.
What, what date certain would you recommend in your motion?
There would be the next meeting, but I would like to see the elevations, I'd like to see the, the information on the buffers, just to make sure that we're clear, and then that gives the residents more time to discuss it as well. Yes, whatever, whichever, yeah, the, the next meeting thing.
Second Wednesday in November.
Yes, the next meeting.
I second that.
Are there any comments about that? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, people. Now, I have a question to say. Can we, so it is not required, can we do something in the meantime to resend notice or make sure that people can get notice?
Well, I think they're gonna let them know now.
Well, I understand that.
We can, we can handle that after the meeting. We have more cases going on.
The next area on the agenda is consideration of a zoning map amended for parcel zero three eight, zero zero, zero six, zero three six, at five twenty-six Roper Road, for rural preservation, unincorporated yet for that, to limited industrial in the city.
Just a second, this is a large file, we need to some drunk footage, so.
It's down there.
It's loading. It's almost there.
My computer systems always wanted a bigger, better, smaller.
Just us.
This representative from the community.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. We're glad you're here. Good morning again, I guess it's still morning.
It's approaching quickly.
So, this is a request on Roper Road, which is out in the Levy community, and I'll show you some maps, and it can kinda orient you as to where this one is. It is contiguous to the city of Hardyville, and it, it is being asked from council to annex, so we will get to that. It is roughly thirty acres, it's on five twenty-six Roper Road, currently undeveloped. And it's currently in Jasper, unincorporated Jasper County, is rural preservation, and they're requesting limited industrial in the city of Hardyville. The parcel is outlined here in red, down at the bottom of your map. It shows that it's contiguous to plan to develop the district down in the Levy community. Zoomed in shot of it. This is three fifteen, so you access it from three fifteen, and Roper Road. There are two out parcels that are currently, that surround, that this parcel surrounds. And I've got some photos and some drunk footage to show you on that. That is the plat of the property, showing you where it's going to be. And, see if I can get this to work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I had, well, another staff member, the fire inspector went out for me, so thank, very thanks to the fire department, Chris was on vacation. This does show a little bit more than just the parcel, but the purpose of us wanting you to see this is to show you that there is not much out there. There are some residences, as we heard, there's some community members, and some, some homes, but there's a large amount of what appear to be hardwood trees out there as well. As we, was mentioned, they're asking for limited industrial for the purposes of a solar farm. And, but with knowing the, all of the amounts of uses that are allowed in limited industrial, we wanted you to have a, a clear view of the area. So, that is the property. All right, so these photos are some still shots from the same thing, and I wanted this one so you could see some of the residences that are around here. It's this parcel back over in here, and it, as mentioned, currently undeveloped. That shows you some more of the other information that's out there. There would not be, from what we understand, improvements to Roper Road or anything necessary, because it's just for a solar farm. But, that is what, approximately thirty acres allowed uses would include anything that is allowed in limited industrial district. Proposed use is a solar farm. The land use element does state that the city should prioritize, prioritize annexing lands which will fill in donut holes. This is not necessarily a donut hole, it's not a enclave, it's not surrounded by the city, it is adjacent, contiguous. And the natural resources element does identify protecting our wetlands and endangered species and those type of things, but it also does include encouraging solar energy and grid sharing. So, that is some possibilities. Just information from the comprehensive plan on, on what is going to be recommended. Process, when you for a recommendation to city council, city council will make the ultimate decision on this, and then it would have to go through a site development process if approved. That's basically the information I have, I do not see the applicant here. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can on this matter for you.
Who is the applicant?
Um, it is the property owner, the current property owner.
Who is that?
It would be on this.
Yeah, it's Mr. Apology. Willie Martin, Willie Martin, yes. I, I kept thinking Martin, but I wasn't gonna make sure it was Mr. Martin. Happy to answer anything I can, but like I said, it's, it's, the thirty acres of, of limited industrial is a little bit, much to bite off at this point.
How do you respond?
I, I have some personal knowledge and experience with solar, which, beautiful wooded area. All those trees that gotta come down. I'm not, I'm not in the paper with it.
We've got residents here? This is not, we, there's some necessary stuff, this is not necessary. Y'all've got power. There's too many questions with the solar, too many trees that's gotta come down. This is rural preservation, it's already rural preservation, and I'm not a big hurry to pull it out. It would have to be very, something very necessary, something to betterment of everyone. And this doesn't fall, doesn't fall near that category to me. I'm not for it, for a bunch of reasons.
My, my questions would be for the applicant, but since they're not here, I don't have any, but just, just some knowledge. Three point five percent of all gener, all energy generated in the state of South Carolina comes from solar. That incorporates fourteen thousand acres from one to hundred twenty-one solar farms. The capacity under perfect conditions for a solar farm happened twenty-one percent of the times out of the year. So, I do not believe that a solar farm in this area is not, is, is the correct fit for me. I do believe in clean energy, but I, I. I would have some other questions for that applicant, but they're not here, so.
Well, I, I'm most anxious to hear from the, from the citizens there commenting on this. But let me say, I, I'm probably the opposite point of view about solar than, than London is I, my house gets solar. I have a electric vehicle with an electric vehicle charger at home that is capable of bi-directional charging me. I can use my car to run my house, there's a battery involved. The, I, I think solar is very important, and I don't particularly think this is a good project either. You know, when, when the drone view, and we started, someone said, I wanted you to see, there's not much here. But there is a lot there, and that, you know, my first reaction is, wow, that's beautiful. It wasn't all pine scrub brush, I mean, that's, that's really the low country to me. So, I think, I think all the members of the commission have a concern about doing away with this kind of land preservation, so. Let's hear from public comment. Anybody in the public that would like to make a comment about this project?
Good morning, my name is the worst young. I do have a concern of this property down on Roper Road, I think it's adjacent to me. Is there a group, is it a group, that they have it up for sale?
Yes, family. It was a family.
It's a family? Okay, so that's, cause it's Jason, my property on three fifteen? And I wanted to know, and to see, as I heard of, of Mr. Rich's estate, I'd rather see people, houses being built than warehouses. So, if we can get the clarity of this, and I'm gonna give my time up to Mr. John Houston to come, please.
Hello. Good morning, my name is John Houston, I live at two sixty-four Florida Drive. If you'll look at that map, you'll see Florida Drive is right to the south of Roper Road. And I've lived there since nineteen eighty-two. I want you to know, first of all, that all the properties surrounding this is in unincorporated Jasper County. I have to tell you, first of all, I did not receive notice about this until eight thirty this morning, eight thirty. And I did not receive it from these people or from the applicant, I received it by a text from one of my neighbors. And I want you to know that big area that they show there in gray, called the Monroe Track, that was taken into Hardyville without any notice to anyone in the whole area. To me, I have twenty-eight hundred and fifty-five lineal feet of property line that adjacent to that property. I did not receive notice that it was gonna be taken into the city of Hardyville. I have questions about whether it was properly taken into the city of Hardyville. I did not receive notice today. And what we have here is a situation where people are trying to come to you, to Hardyville, to avoid Jasper County, because they know that they cannot get away with that in Jasper County, in unincorporated Jasper County. So, they wanna come to you, to the council in Hardyville. I was promised by the mayor of Hardyville, when I found out about the, uh, property that was being developed on Levy Limehouse Road, that the people within five hundred feet would be given notice. Where's my notice? I've never gotten it. The only way I got it was by text, by, from somebody else who had not received the notice, but just happened to see it at eight thirty AM this morning. And so, let me just tell you that there are a lot of problems with this besides the trees. South of this is Carol, is Carol Estates to the east, and then Osprey Lakes to the south. There are all kinds of drainage problems for both of those subdivisions, where people have lived there for years. Years. Carol Estates was Dr. Carol here in Hardyville, you probably wouldn't know him.
I know him.
Medical doctor here years ago, you would know him. But he developed that property in the nineteen sixties. And he relied on a drainage plan that was in, it's, uh, in there because of the Hadwin property, which is now Osprey Lakes, to drain all of those properties where those single-family residences are. If you allow them to do this, that's gonna interrupt that drainage. And that's gonna adversely affect sixty-two houses in Osprey Lakes. It's gonna adversely affect twenty-five houses in Carol Estates. It's gonna adversely affect me, where I live on a private piece of property that is approximately fifty acres. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-two. And they are trying to get around all of these things by bringing this to you. I question whether or not it is appropriate for you to decide what the zoning is gonna be before it's even in the town of Hardyville. Why in the world would you rezone something when it's not even in the town of Hardyville? What authority would you have to rezone something when it's not even in the town of Hardyville? So, I respectfully ask that you deny this petition and allow us to live in unincorporated Jasper County. And if these people want, to go ahead and see about having something done in unincorporated Jasper County, let them be free to do so. Thank you.
If I can address your concern there.
Yes, sir.
The, the Planning Commission doesn't zone, and we don't have anything to do with annexation. We recommend to city council, city council has the authority to change any-
I understand that, but I think it is inappropriate, Mr. Foreman, for you to recommend to the city council to rezone something when it's not even in the city. That's, that's totally in a- That's, that's totally inappropriate.
That, that's a fair comment, but the, the, what I'm, what I'm trying to make clear is, at the time that city council would review this, they would be voting on both annexation.
I understand that, but I have not received notice. And, and my further point to you is, is that you shouldn't allow people to come to you and go around unincorporated Jasper County, which all of this property is in, and all of the other people are going to be affected are in unincorporated Jasper County. If they want to do something, they ought to go to county council in Jasper County, go to their planning commission and ask for this. And then, we would receive notice. And we would be able to deal with it at the county council. And we would be able to determine whether or not we are right or they are right. It's totally inappropriate for you to recommend something that is not even in Hardyville. Thank you.
Are there any further comments?
Yes, my name is Isaac Crowley. I live at thirteen thirty-three Freedom Parkway. And my family owns eighty-five plus acres that's north of that property. And, um, we got no notice also. No one informed us about anything and I don't think this is a good idea. I don't know what thirty acres would do anyhow for a solar, uh, a solar plant. Um, it's not enough, um, space even if they wanted to do it. I, I don't think there's enough space, but, um, I just don't think that we're, we're in the position, being out in the country, have a whole lot of say to what goes on. It's like the gentleman just said, y'all just come down and do whatever y'all want to us. And we can, we can complain, but that's about it. We can't vote y'all guys in office or out of office. And I think that's, that's just wrong for y'all to come and do whatever y'all want without the residents of Levy having some voting power. Cause I think things will change if we had some voting power. That's it.
Thank you.
This property is definitely not that eighth part of the eighty-five track that, um, Howard Bowles. That's something else, right?
I don't, I don't know.
But I'm pretty sure.
Are there any other comments?
Good morning. My name's Lorraine Fawn. I live on Levy Road. And basically, it's, uh, what everybody is saying is that we don't need all of this stuff coming to our community. Okay? And I don't understand how you, you get to the point of bringing it here without having some limitations that developers have to even come to the community like this. If it annexed into the city, then the city should be having some kind of thing where it will save the community. Are you prepared to make buffers? Are you prepared to do this? Are you prepared to do that? So that, just like if it came to your spot where you live. Because definitely that's what you will be doing. And we already have warehouses. We already got a pit, the promise of a pit that we trying to make sure doesn't happen. We got signs all over Levy saying, save Levy. That means something. Okay? We had hearings and we had three, four hundred people there. Okay? And we'll have a thousand the next time. So, you know, if it's something, you want to bring some homes there? Affordable homes that people can afford? Fine, we go with that. But all of this other stuff, I thought the, the, what are those things called? The storage units, they're transformers to me. When I first started, when they first started putting them up and I drove down the road, they saw it on my road that I lived on. I've only been there officially for twenty years, but my family has been here eighty years. Six generations. And they, and people who come here from other places, okay? And what you're running from, you want to bring here. And that's not why you came. You came and said, oh, it's lovely. It's peaceful. And now we have traffic that we can't even, that you know that you don't even like. Okay? So, why is it that you want to increase it? Okay? We, and they have every kind of thing, the lights, we don't have the, the, we just have the thing up the road. The roundabout. Oh, my God, the traffic in the morning there, you could, I could stay twenty-five minutes at Levy Road trying to get out onto the road. But nobody comes around and checks that out. You just hear people say it. But do you go there and say, I need to experience this for myself? I need to experience this for myself so that I know. Cause I went, I actually went to the news and said, you need to check the traffic on three fifteen going from Sav- coming from Savannah. And said, all of these things, developers need to be saying, you need to be saying to the developers, have you taken these things into consideration? Because these people are going to come back here and these are exactly the things that they're going to say that you didn't do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? Commissioner.
Good morning. Um, as far as from the staff level looking at this, um, where this is proposed to go, it lacks the infrastructure for fire protection in there. You still have to have continuity of roads. You still have to have fire protection elements. And they've just drawn a polygon around a site and saying that it's going to serve as a solar, solar farm to catch on fire. There's other things that happen there. So, it lacks all the adequate infrastructure there needed for fire protection to service this. I would recommend it now.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments?
Sir, on the, on the, uh, in case you weren't here earlier, the notice hopefully will be resolved very shortly. I can only tell you that, that I hope so because I can't stand to hear, we should never have, the issue, the, the issue of notice should be the smallest thing to worry about. All the, all the planning and all the bills that get paid, all the engineers, everything that gets done costs a fortune. Notification should be the smallest thing. If we can't get notification out, I can only assume there's a reason. And that reason is not good for the people who live adjacent to whatever project is coming up. So, I hope that next month, this goes away. Because my blood pressure and notification don't go well together. And you can look at the meetings in the past and you can see just how serious I am about this notification. It's the simplest form of respect to the people that have lived there for ten years, a hundred years. Or, um, it, it's very easy to do and it's very disrespectful for you not to get that notice. Now, again, notice, two years' notice wouldn't be enough for certain areas, but that does not preclude us from doing what, what we're supposed to do when that is notified. The notice might, at the end, might be shorter than what I wanted, but I hope that we adhere to what's coming down the pipe. As far as people slipping in, if they don't get what they want in the county level and then swapping over to, uh, Regal or, uh, Hardyville, everybody's getting fully aware of that and we're actually having big discussions on that. We want to be mindful of how that affects, uh, our future. So, just be aware that we are very in tune to that right now. And we are now all talking, uh, even before we had this meeting, there was discussion on stuff like that. And we're, we're trying to make sure that we communicate very well that that doesn't happen. Uh, because the property that we have in Jasper County, the low country, is highly, highly valuable. If it wasn't, everybody wouldn't be coming here. So, we want to be very mindful of what we, what uses they are. And as far as the solar panel, if you want to put a solar panel farm on your roof, I'm all for that. If you want to drive a solar car, I'm for that. But putting thirty acres in, in rural preservation and pulling property out of rural preservation to put a solar pan- panel there just for profit when we already have S D and G and P M O, I'm not doing that. Um, I'm not voting for that. I'm only one guy on one board that, that is just an advisory board, but I, I'll say that I'm not going to approve this.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion first. Recommendation for not, not approving, so disapproving this.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. The recommendation is for disapproval. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Kenny and I will be, um, out a few days next week. We are, been asked to present to the North Carolina, South Carolina American Planning Association meeting in Charlotte. Um, we're, we are joining forces with a city that's fastest growing in North Carolina and going to have a panel about, um, what we're learning and what we're experiencing and, and how to cope with it. So, we are very excited about that, about growth, yes. Um, also next week, um, we, council did vote to give us the, um, go ahead for our firm that was chosen for the comprehensive plan update. And, um, we have a meeting next Wednesday afternoon with, um, the consultants to kick, start, uh, planning our kickoff. And it's going to be a twelve-month process. Um, that was put in the contract, just because I know the last one was so long. And, um, we are very excited and can't wait for the planning commission's involvement and the public opportunities that we're going to have for this new vision for us moving forward.
That's what I have. I don't have a whole lot to add. I just wanted to say, I know you, you all had some tough stuff on the agenda today and, um, I think you handled it very well. We, you know, people apply to us and we can't say you can't apply, but we can say that we're not going to recommend approval or we are going to recommend appropriate approval. So, thank you for your hard work. We appreciate you.
I, I have a question. Just one gentleman brought up the Jasper County, Hardyville annexing, not annexing. What's the state law, like how does all, cause I know we have a project on two seventy-eight, which they came here first, they didn't like what they heard, they, they went to Jasper County.
And they actually never formally applied. They talked to staff and they didn't like the standards. But, um, but what we can, they can petition for annexation. And state law says that in order to annex something, we have to have zoning also in place. So, you are, it is appropriate for you to make that recommendation on zoning at this meeting. Um, and then planning, or city council, um, will then look at both of those applications concurrently, the annexation and the zoning. So, uh, but we don't, we can't force people to annex in the state of South Carolina. In some other states you can, here, they have to come to us.
Well, they apply for it, right?
Yes. And, and what that we've learned with, um, just some jurisdictions do handle it slightly differently as far as the zoning assignment. They would, um, in, in other states especially, you go in with the lowest possible zoning. So, they would go up from rural preservation to rural prep, to whatever we have, conservation preservation. In, in, in South Carolina, they want a little more discussion about what that person's going to be annexing for before you go out and do it. So, that's why we get into the, what zoning district they're going to be looking for before we go through that process. So, um, yeah, different states, different theories, but, um, yes, I, I think I've told you before and I'll keep saying it, I tried to do my thesis at Clemson on South Carolina's annexation laws and my professors were like, no way, no how, there's not enough years. So, um, that tells you a little bit about our annexation laws. So, we, we, we muddled through this and tried to help.
Do the commissioners have any reports or comments they would make?
What heartbreaking at all. This was not, this wasn't hard. There was some hard ones, but this wasn't one of them.
I, I would just like to say that I'm, I'm honored to be a part of this, to be able to help make decisions for the betterment of the community. Uh, I love the fact that we had community involvement. So, word of mouth apparently is working better than notifications. So, I'm looking forward to that notification ordinance going into effect. Um, and that we can have more, um, more transparency amongst the developer, developers, the city and the residents, because it is important, because we are in one of the fastest-growing areas in the country. We all recognize that. So, um, great job to staff for keeping us, uh, in line. And, um, I, I appreciate that today.
Can I ask one more question? With the, uh, the group on East Argen, the crowd that was here, which I'm glad they came out and glad they, they, however they had noticed, they got noticed because they showed up. And we, we moved the meeting to next month. How do we solve the issues that they addressed between now and then so we make some progress?
Well, we don't have, there, there's no requirements in any of our documents. But what we can do, and I think we probably will do, is recommend that the applicant send back out a notification about the planning commission meeting with the updated council dates, um, regular mail.
Correct, yes. Yes, one hundred percent. This, I, I don't even, do they have to go downtown Hardyville to get their mail?
That's probably Regal.
No.
It's Hardyville.
No, it's Hardyville.
So, they have to come downtown Hardyville. We all know how wonky the hours are here.
That is, um, you know, and I will, I will say, there's a line. I just encountered issues with the post office myself this past weekend. Um, I am, am still kind of blown away. I'm not blaming the post office. We're all growing and learning from, from what we're dealing with. But, um, I can see where people are just aren't getting regular mail or, um, certified mail and it is.
It took two weeks to get a check from New Jersey to me.
It's, it's a challenge right now. Um, we've had things go from here to Charleston to Miami, back up to Columbia. I mean, so, I, I don't.
Any, are, any of the concerns that they have, are we doing anything by defense or?
Can we get that to revise elevations?
We will have, we'll have a information packet for you, um, like we do a week before your meeting.
If we had proceeded with the, uh, recommendation and I, I had a very couple of conditions here that we could have considered that would have addressed some of those things. But, you know, Rusty did say that he would, in the meantime, redo the elevations and so on. So, I would expect them to come back with the additional information, at least the, the one for areas that he indicated.
He's already working on stuff.
And we certainly will, will encourage and give, start giving out the information on that living fence and the benefits and the, the whole spiel on it. Um, when we were meeting early on with these applicants, um, because we know a lot of times they don't, until they get to you, that the applicants aren't always listening to staff's recommendations. But, um, I think that we can start showing these meetings and, and getting more progress upfront.
Uh, and the last thing I'm going to say is, um, I really appreciate the comments about our service. And, you know, I, I never fail to be impressed by our staff, both in terms of the broad range of expertise, the professionalism and the great courtesies that you show us. And I, I really appreciate it. Makes, it certainly makes it much more worthwhile for us, so.
And I just want to add, somebody needs to explain to me why we aren't given a month's notice and letting the, you know, the mail mess up for a week. What's the difference? What, what's the advantage? With all that takes place for these meetings, what's the, what's the advantage of one week's notice versus one month's notice?
Um, I want, I'd like to, to include, um, management and others and our attorneys and everybody in with that. And, because it's bigger than just us. It's, 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 um, it's a whole thing. Right now, currently with what was just adopted, we have the strictest notification, most stringent in South Carolina, maybe the region. Um, we're going to continue on that. I, um, I will, if you will allow me to get, get some better answers for you as to why it's that way, I will, I'll be happy to.
It's not, it, it, it's not that I need you to tell me anything. It's just it may, it, everybody knows this meeting's coming. You guys know, it takes a long time.
We don't know, we don't know a month ahead of which applications are going to fulfill everything by that point.
That's a good answer. That's a good answer.
Is there?
We get a week's notice.
But is the new requirement one week?
Fifteen days.
Fourteen days and five hundred feet.
And that's the closest that I've come to an answer since the first time it come on my radar. Um, because in my mind, y'all know, I didn't. on my radar, because in my mind, y'all know about this for a year.
No, sir, no, sir, they, they, and I, I will, I'm going to use, I guess we're still on TV, I'm going to use Roper Road for an example. They called everybody, every elected appointed official in the world that they could make sure they got on this agenda, and, and that's, that's public knowledge, I'm not.
Very good. So, next, the next meeting, on November 12th, I believe it is, we're going to have a traffic engineer to help.
I will do my best.
Okay.
I can't promise it, but I'm going to do everything I can to have that.
Yeah, because I will certainly do my homework to be ready for that.
They're our friends, okay? They're our friends.
No, I just want to make sure, like, because, because I have my concerns as well, because I had the same concerns with the other project that was down this side of wildlife.
That, we want to give you information to show you what goes into it, not just have an argument.
Right, 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 no, of course, yes.
That's the movie, and you know, that's an ongoing concern. If they can't be here for the next meeting, then the meeting.
I will, I will, we'll do the best we can. It's just everybody, October is a, an extremely busy month for everyone. I don't know why, so we'll, we'll shoot for, for November and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. If there's no further business, the meeting is adjourned.